I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play with me. Father, we are here tonight to do the business of the Ponca City Public Schools. Please be with us so we can make the best decisions for our district. Our students and staff are important to us. Please bless our students and their parents as they entrust us to give them the best that we have to offer. Thank you for the cooler weather. As fall approaches, so does the thoughts of turning leaves, holidays, and families. Thank you for all of your blessings. Please be with our men and women of the armed forces as they protect us here at home and abroad, and give us and other nations the wisdom to do the right things for peace. We ask this in your name. Amen.
You see, please. Jan, when you call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Present.
Dr. Pennington?
Present.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Here. First order of business would be public comment. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to make a comment to the board? If not, then we'll move right on to item 3.0, Propose New and Revised Board Policies. It's my understanding Dr. Pennington will discuss these with us, answer any questions, but we will not vote on them tonight. The vote will be at next month's meeting.
Okay. You're receiving in your board packet a synopsis of the policies that was put together by Betty Johnson after we've had the administrative committees within the central office look at those and then as we had a chance to discuss with especially the curriculum committee and some of the other committees. So I'm just going to go through these. The vast majority of these are just small changes in policy, okay? Where maybe a sentence has been added. There are some that are brand-new policies, and so we'll talk about those. The first one is Policy 1.19, which, and then 2.4, which talks about agenda preparation, dissemination, and then speaking privileges of the public. The main change here has to do with how the public will address the board. You may remember that five years ago, our policy stated that when everybody, when anybody gave public comments, they could not criticize or say negative things about employees of the district. And then we had a decision by the State School Board Association. They changed their opinion on that, and they sent us a notice that said, well, we have to change, we have to change our board policies, and you have to let, if somebody in the public wants to come and be critical of a teacher or administrator or whatever it is, they can do that. That has since changed, which sometimes happens with legal opinions. And now we have the ability to limit that discussion again. And so basically, what will happen if you guys adopt this change is that we'll have a list of things that speakers are not allowed to address the board on. An issue in a pending lawsuit, complain or investigation filed with an outside agency. Were in the district employer of the board as a party. A pending grievance. A pending employee complaint filed with the district or an outside agency. A complaint against an individual employee. An employee disciplinary action, including suspension or termination. And a pending pupil action, including suspension on appeal that may reach the board. No individual or group may use the agenda item as a form for campaign for or against a candidate for public office or a ballot measure. Also, individuals will be required to sign in when they come to the meeting and tell, and fill out a form which says they want to speak. And then when they do address the board, which we do now, they're addressed to give their name and then whatever it is, what topic they want to discuss. Some things will stay the same currently. Whenever, whenever somebody speaks to the board, our policy says that the board will not address that at that meeting, that you will refer whatever issue is raised back. You can either refer it to me, or you can actually ask that at the next board meeting that I address that issue with you. So those things will stay the same. Probably the main change here is, and that we will not allow during that public comment session, comment to be made either, and it could be that somebody wants to come and tell us what a great job a classroom teacher's done, or a basketball coach, or a football coach, whatever it is. But we won't, that will not be permissible in this, in a board meeting in this setting. Okay? Anybody have any questions about that?
I think one other thing, the way I read it, they can only address items that are on the agenda unless they've given like a week's notice in it or so.
They want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, they can, they can request permission to address the board, and just as in current policy, if somebody wants to address the board, they have to contact the superintendent's office seven days, at least seven days prior to the posting of the agenda, and that is done either with the permission of the superintendent and the board president. I mean, either, either one of those two parties could place it on the agenda or not have it placed on the agenda.
Otherwise, they can only speak about subjects that are agenda items.
Okay. All right. Duties of the clerk. The main change here, we've had a change, and you'll see this again somewhere else. We had a change in state law that, beginning with the 2015, in 2015, January 1st, 2015, candidates for board office have to form a campaign committee, okay? And so with the formation of that campaign committee comes additional reporting requirements, all right? And as a result of that, there will be more paperwork that potential board members, people who want to run for the board, have to file. There'll be financial disclosures, and those financial disclosures will become public record, all right? They will be, those, the way board elections currently work is any paperwork that you complete as a board member now, that doesn't go to the State Ethics Commission like it does for other candidates for public office. It is, the board clerk is the custodian of that information. And so these new forms then, these new filing requirements, will be the board's clerk responsibility to keep those documents for at least four years. And so the new board policy on duties of the board clerk contains those new responsibilities for the board clerk. And again, that's required by state law. Policy 2.8, Use of School Facilities. This, the base, what this, this revision, the purpose of this is to bring us to compliance, and we have several policies that House Bill 2614 affects. And that was a piece of legislation which said that you can now have a weapon on campus if it's inoperable. So if someone were coming to a, to the school, maybe they wanted to do, oh, an ROTC presentation of some kind, a drill. They wanted to come and perform on a school campus and demonstrate the kind of drills that ROTC students do. Well, then they would be able to bring a weapon on campus to do that as long as it was inoperable. The other thing that this allows now is that if somebody has a valid handgun license, okay? They can now bring that on campus as long as they have it, leave it locked in their car. They still can't bring it in the building, but they can have it on campus as long as it's locked in their car. And again, there is a couple of other places where that comes into play. Remember, under current law, we have a federal law which prohibits weapons on school campuses, within a thousand feet of school campuses. And so now you have a state law that's been written that says that, well, in Oklahoma, we have a, we have an open carry and a concealed carry permit law. And if you have that open carry permit, then you can have that gun on school property as long as you lock it in your car. Now, obviously, you have a federal law that says one thing, and a state law that says another thing. And Mr. Bracken, I think you wrote a little opinion on that already.
The federal law actually has an exception that the state law is consistent with.
Okay.
It's a tempest in the teapot.
Yeah.
But the nice thing about what they did by state law is it focuses our attention on the exception in federal law.
Right. Okay. And again, the gun has, the weapon has to be in the vehicle, left in the vehicle, and has to be locked. So whatever, so that's, so we're still not, this doesn't allow anybody to bring a weapon into a classroom. And, you know, even that law that does exist that allows us now, you know, to have a concealed carry permit or an open carry permit, you've got to be 21. So students are still under the current rules as they exist. The Policy 2.1, 3.0 is a new law, and it has to do with a parent, it's called the Parent Bill of Rights. And this has, this legislation has several parts to it. I think in general, a lot of it is practices and policies that have been in place. It kind of brings them into one location in board policy now. The, but we are, we are required now to, to list how we promote parent participation at the site level. So, for example, we do parent-teacher conferences. We have back-to-school and meet-the-teacher nights. We have district-sponsored webpages with class information available to parents. We have school newsletters. We also do literacy and math nights, technology expositions, paraschool portals. And then we have parenting classes that we offer, because those are the things we do as a district that we offer for parents. We, we offer course study information. We do that during enrollment. In enrollment, we talk about the courses that we have, and we, we have handouts that are, that are a guide to the courses that are offered. They're part of the student handbook. We have that, some of that's on our district webpage. Again, our paraschool parent portal contains information. We have letters that we send. RSA, Reading Sufficiency Act, letters and notices are things that go out to parents that inform them how their children are doing in school, especially if they have a, if they've identified, if they've been a student that we've identified that there are reading deficiencies, then we notify them of those deficiencies. We have parent-teacher conferences. We do those twice a year. We, we have, we have a sixth-grade academy. That's a meeting that they have at the sixth grade at the beginning there where we invite parents to the building, and they have, they can go follow their child's class schedule, and they have discussions about coursework. And then we have a parent transition meeting at the fifth, seventh, ninth grade level. So those are, when we change schools, then we do a parent transition meeting. We've done that for years where parents can come and they can find out about, about what's going to happen at the new school. We have a freshman academy for parents. And then in some cases, we actually have staff members that do home visits. If we've been trying to get in contact with parents and we're not able to do that, we have staff that do those. And, and, and then we also, also, parents can review learning materials affecting their minor child's course of study, including supplemental materials by making a request to the building principal. For years, we have done a, we provide sex education courses. We do that in the sixth and seventh grade. We send a permission slip home so that, notifying parents that we're getting ready, this is, we're gonna, we're gonna, and the school nurses do this. They actually have a, an open, they have a meeting where parents can come to the meeting, and they can review the curriculum that we offer, and they can discuss that information with the school nurse. And, and so the requirement now is that parents who object to that, their child participating in that program must submit a written notice, which has to be signed and dated by the parent in order for their child to be excused. And then again, there are some other things that have to do with, with, with other, that when we, when do we discuss AIDS? We do that in the, again, in the sixth and seventh grade, we have an AIDS education class. In fact, we do AIDS in fifth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade. So again, you can read through this, but it, again, is, I think, an attempt by the legislature to take practices that were going across, going on in school districts across the state, kind of codify those, put them in one spot so that parents would know exactly what their rights were. Anybody have any questions on that policy? Okay. Next one is Title I complaints, and Title I is our federal program that, that we get that either you may know it as No Child Left Behind or ESEA, but it drives money to the district based upon students who live in poverty, and the purpose of that money is to supplement their education, to provide supplemental dollars for services that the district cannot afford to do. And so the Title I complaint policy is just basically a policy that says that, that parents have a right, there's a way to file a complaint if they object to something that we're doing with Title I funds. We already have Title I parent meetings. We have a, we have a parent committee that reviews our Title I application, that we discuss how we're going to do our Title I funding, that, that, that parent meeting. We send a, we send a notice out that goes home to parents who have children in Title I schools. And, and we have a committee, but that is also a public meeting, and so people who choose to attend that meeting can do so. Then, the next policy is a review of instructional policies. And, and so this, we've had this policy for a number of years. This adds to it instructional materials that, that parents want to, that they have an objection to. And so it sets up a process by which how, if they have an objection, how do they address that objection? It directs them to the school principal, and then if they're not able to resolve it at that level, then it redirects them back to the Board of Education. Now, we had a discussion, I had a discussion with Robin about when would that come into play? That would come into play in case that you had a situation where there was, you know, I mean, I can't imagine what that would be, but let's say there's a course assignment that's going to take place in a history class. And so a parent objects to that assignment, they meet with the building principal, they discuss that, and they're not able to resolve that matter at the building level. The classroom teacher believes that that instructional material, whatever it is, is critical to the, to the lesson that's being taught. We're not able to resolve that. Then that individual can bring their objection to the board. And if that were to happen, then we would set a, have an agenda item on the next board meeting where that parent would be able to come up and tell you why they object to whatever that instructional material is. It doesn't require the, you know, you wouldn't vote on it that night. You know, I'm sure that probably your direction would be for me to, to look into that matter and bring a report back to the board, in which I would do that research and come back to you and tell you why the instructional leadership of this district believes that that particular policy or assignment, whatever it is, is something that is, is vital to what goes on in that classroom. So the, kind of the, the difference between this and what we do with sex education is that if we have a parent that doesn't want their child to participate in sex education, they go and they sit in the library for that day. A parent who has an objection to an instructional material, that student is still required, is still responsible for that instruction, whatever that, whatever, whatever the purpose of that lesson was, whether it's a lesson about the Civil War, we'll use that, it has to do with the Civil War and maybe, you know, what were some of the reasons why the Civil War was fought? The student is still responsible for that instructional content. So whatever that material is being used to teach, whatever that standard would be, the student would still be responsible for that standard. And it would be the parent's responsibility to make sure the students get whatever that instruction would be. I don't see that, I, you know, I mean, I've been, been doing this for, you know, as a classroom teacher administrator, I've been doing this for 39 years. I've never been involved in a situation where a parent objected to classroom material that did not fall under our, our other instructional material rules, which is, which generally, it's going to, usually involves a video of some kind. You may have noticed there was an article in the Tulsa paper a few weeks ago where there was a parent that objected to a, to a video that dealt with 9/11. And, and, and so because it was a video library material, it went under that policy where you, you know, you state your objection, you put a committee together at the building level, the building level committee reviews that material. The committee consists of a teacher, an administrator, usually somebody from the community. They review the material, and they make a decision. And so I, I think that, and generally, whatever, whatever comes out of this policy revision, I would imagine that in most districts would probably go under that same instructional material review. The next policy is 3.3, has to do with tobacco-free schools. And what this policy does is it bans the use of cartridges. The smokeless tobacco, smoke, the, you know, we've got several places in town that sell those, and it just makes clear that just like tobacco is banned from our campuses 24 hours a day, seven days a week, those new devices are banned 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We, you know, as part, it goes into our healthy community initiative, our healthy school initiative. We, we don't want to send a message that smoking is healthy. And, and I think that, obviously, there may be some day in the future where they've able to, and I know that, I'm not, you know, I know that, that they believe that this new type of smoking is maybe a little bit healthier, and it, and it does somewhat help with the secondhand smoke, but, you know, you still have a product that, that is still tobacco. So. School safety drills. This one has to do with all the new safety drills, and again, it goes back, it just kind of puts that all in one place. We now have 10 drills we have to do. We have a report that has to be done. That report has to not only, principals not only have to report to the district, they also have to give a report to the state accreditation office, or they also have a report that they send to the Office of Homeland Security. The state Office of Homeland Security, not the federal Office of Homeland Security. Next policy, Policy 3.5. This is another, this has to do again with allowing ROTC members to bring inoperable weapons, weapons on school campus for participation in school-approved assemblies. Reading Sufficiency Act. This puts into board policy the changes that were made in the Reading Sufficiency Act last legislative session, which created the exemptions for the Reading Sufficiency law. Remember, we talked about those last spring, that if a student did not pass or score well enough on the state test, and they were supposed to be retained in the third grade, they could take another standardized test, and if they scored well enough on that, they would not have to go to summer school. We also gave them an assessment at the end of school, at the end of the summer school program. They could be exempted if they had already been in special ed and retained for a year. There were, I forget Terry, how many exemptions there were, but again, we put those into place last year once the legislation was passed, just, just takes those exemption and puts them into board policy. Proficiency tests. This eliminates the term "common core" and priority academic skills and replaces it with standards adopted by the State Board of Education. This way, whenever the legislature, from this point on, whenever they, whenever, as they change standards, we don't have to change our policy language every time we have a new set of standards that the state legislature passes or rejects, or whatever they do. Public records. This, again, goes along with what we talked about earlier about board members running for public office and the records they have to keep. So this puts it, it's not only, will not only be as a duty for this, for the board clerk, this also puts into policy exactly what those records are, and then how somebody will make a request for those records. Alcohol and drug testing. Previous policy said we would test 25% of our drivers. This brings us into compliance with federal law, which is 10%. Policy 6.4.3 has to do with a, with a employee who has more than one assignment for the district, and those assignments have different pay scales. And what this says, if we have such an employee and they're working overtime, it doesn't matter what the overtime is, we will average the two jobs they have, and whatever that average of salary is, is what their overtime compensation will be based on. We're required to do that by federal law. 6.6-5.0, this has to do with other academic measures. If you remember, several years ago, we passed the Teacher Leader Effectiveness Requirement, which is how we evaluate teachers. There's a part of it that is based upon principal observation. There's another part that is based upon student test results. And then another part, which is what we call other academic measures. And this has to do with, with, with other ways that teachers can demonstrate that they are effective in the classroom other than just state standardized tests. And you saw the list that was provided, and there's some other things on it that we added to it. It's a pretty extensive list. Shelley, is that all supposed to go into effect this year or next academic year?
Actually, we track them this year, and then they will go into effect for the 2015, 2016 count toward the evaluation.
So we've been kind of field testing, I guess would be the right word, of those things. And then they actually become a part of the evaluation, assuming that TLE doesn't change in 1516. My guess is that we'll see a change in the TLE before we get to the 1516 school year. This has to do with support employees, and it has to do with them having the ability to have a valid hand, if they have a valid handgun license, that they can have their gun in the school parking lot, again, as long as it's locked. It also talks about e-cigarettes, and it makes some changes in unemployment compensation, unemployment compensation language that, that has to do with how we demonstrate employee misconduct whenever we have a disagreement on whether an employee is eligible for unemployment compensation. Student residency. We have a new law this year that says that if, that a legal, a parent or legal custodian may give another individual the right of what is called a power of attorney, and gives them a right to legally enroll in the school district. So that's a new way that students can legally attend the Ponca City Public Schools. The next policy, 7.05, has to do with our open transfer rules, and, and the legislature made some changes in the dates, and they had laws that had different dates for open transfer. And last session, they cleaned that up, and so now we, the dates are all consistent. Child abuse, interesting, this is a little interesting in that it, it puts into law that if a, if a teacher suspects that a child is being abused, that, that they are required to report that abuse first before they notify their building principal. And that's, that's a little different. They've always been required to report, but this adopts language that says that they were reported themselves before they reported to their building principal. And, and you can, it talks about, gives a definition of some terms, what's abuse neglect, person responsible, talks about sexual abuse, exploitation, trafficking, who the parent is. And then it lays out what they're to do, and there's actually a toll-free number that they're to report that to. In the past, generally, what you would do is you'd contact the local DHS office. And so now that's report is to go to that statewide hotline for that report. And then they notify the official. Any questions about that? Any questions about that? Okay.